Again, get to the heart of the agenda. I want to go ahead and provide a little bit of information about the way we'll be conducting proceedings this evening. And this is again, a joint study session. It will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's executive orders in 2920, N 0821, and 1521, which order suspend certain requirements of the Brown Act and authorize teleconferencing at city meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic. Commissioners, committee members, and city staff essential to this meeting will be teleconferencing into the meeting, and there will be no physical location open to the public. The public can however, observe the meeting remotely via the Zoom link as the primary means of participation, or via cable channel 26 or live stream broadcast as alternate methods of viewing the meeting. Participation via the Zoom link will enable the meeting to be observed live and will enable the public to speak during the public comment periods. Zoom link was published in the meeting agenda. Live public comments are being accepted at this meeting. Public comments may be provided live by members of the public utilizing the Zoom link to participate in the meeting. Utilize the raised hand function in the Zoom application on a computer, smartphone, or on your tablet, or else enter *9 to raise your hand if you're dialing in by phone. Please ensure your name is correctly entered in your Zoom profile so city staff can properly identify you when it's your turn to speak. Those dialing in by phone will be called to speak by the last four digits of their phone number as shown in the Zoom interface. With that said, we'll go ahead Ben and get to the substance of the agenda and I guess in some sense already dealt with the call to order unless there's anything else said that we need to address on that point. I'll look to city staff to see whether we need to do anything else to call ourselves to order. Hearing nothing, I think we'll just go then to the roll call and I will ask whoever it is that's dealing with the roll call to go ahead and help us with that.
Thank you Chair, I will help you with that.
Thank you.
For the Planning Commission, Commissioner Domarot. I'm see the present Commissioner Domarot. Commissioner Ferguson.
Commissioner Ferguson will be absent this evening.
Commissioner Godwin.
I'm present.
Commissioner Hauser.
I'm present.
Commissioner Liel.
Present.
Vice Chair Berman.
Present.
Chair Nathan.
I'm here.
Thank you. For the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission, Commissioner Haywood. Commissioner Haywood is to be absent. Commissioner Calog.
Present.
Commissioner Knowles.
Absent.
Commissioner Marketti. Commissioner Benton Shoemaker.
Here.
Chair Proten Blessen.
Lucian, here.
Blessen, thank you.
And Chair Abbott.
Present.
For the Beautification Advisory Committee, Committee Member Bennett.
Yo Bennett, present.
Committee Member Gosage.
Present.
Committee Member Huntalas.
Present.
Committee Member Jonas. Member Jonas, not present. Committee Member Wells.
Did you say Wells?
Yes.
Thank you, he's present.
Vice Chair Hoffman. Vice Chair Hoffman is absent and Chair Moses.
Present.
Thank you. That concludes our call.
Thank you Ms. Chair, that was a marathon for sure, but I think we got through that and that then will take us to the balance of the agenda, the study session agenda. And we will proceed here as has been set forth in the staff report is that we'll have our city consultant, Davy Resources Group give a presentation that lays out again the work that's been done to date with respect to the matter of work considering this evening. And then myself with the assistance of the other two chairs are going to go ahead and receive some concise questions and comments from our respective commission members. And then ultimately then we'll turn to the public for public comment. So with that, then I guess Mr. Bautista, I've turned it over to you so that you can introduce us to our presenters.
Great. I'll go ahead and start. Good evening, Plan Commissioners, Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commissioners, and Beautification Advisory Committee Members. My name is Sam Bautista, your Deputy Director of Public Works for Engineering and Field Services. I just wanted to thank you for taking your time out of your busy schedule to attend this important meeting. The city is excited to start the Heritage Tree Ordinance Update and we are looking forward to your feedback. I wanted to give you a brief overview of how the meeting will be held. Tonight's presentation will be given by the city's consultant Davy Resource Group. We will go over preliminary comments received from stakeholder interviews regarding the Heritage Tree Ordinance. So we're asking if you could please hold your comments and questions to the end of the presentation. After the presentation, Chair Diblin will, with the assistance of PBR Commission Chair Abbott and Beautification Advisory Committee Chair Moses, will lead the joint session to address 17 questions posed during the presentation and to receive concise questions or comments from the commission or committee members. We will pose the questions in groups and receive comments by commission. Starting with the Plan Commission, then Chair Diblin will hand the floor to Chair Abbott and receive comments from the PBR Commission, and then have the floor to Chair Moses to receive comments from the BAC. We will go through the questions in order as presented in the presentation. When your commission or committee has the floor, please use the raised hand function to provide your comments to the chair. After receiving comments from all commissions and committees, Chair Diblin will then open the meeting for public comment. Chair Diblin will then return to the commissions and committees in the same order for any final comments and then we will adjourn the meeting. The City Tree Program and Heritage Tree Ordinance Update Project is one of the city council's priorities for this fiscal year. The project is to evaluate and recommend changes to reflect current good forestry practices and administration. In addition, the city does not have an urban forest management plan, which would help the city obtain grants from state agencies to help fund tree program components such as tree inventories and urban reforestation. Due to the large scope and complexity of this topic, the project was divided into two parts. The Tree Work Plan Part One, which involves updating the Heritage Tree Ordinance, review and modification of public and private tree removal processes, review and modification of city street tree maintenance processes, and provide public engagement and outreach. Davy Resource Group will be going over this in their presentation. The second part, which is Tree Work Plan Part Two, would tentatively begin during the latter half of this fiscal year. We would build upon Work Plan Part One, and this task is to start a tree inventory, establish a sustainable urban forest open space management plan, implement software programs to assist with tree management, and provide public engagement and an education plan. In this part, the North County Fire Authority and the Open Space and Park Advisor Committee along with the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Committee would have or would be more involved because of aspects related to safety issues as it relates to urban forests and open space management. We are at the beginning phases of the Heritage Tree Ordinance Update and this is the first public meeting. The goal of the study session is for staff and Davy Resource Group to receive additional feedback and to analyze the comments for consideration into an updated Heritage Tree Ordinance. The comments will be compiled and included in a draft benchmarking study that will be presented at a future study session to city council. And with that, I turn the floor to Davy Resource Group to start the presentation.
Thank you Sam for that introduction. Good evening Commissioners. My name is Allison Seraphin Steer. I am a Certified Arborist and a Qualified Tree Risk Assessor and a Senior Associate Consultant with Davy Resource Group, or DRG. And my colleague is also on the call today, Tina McKeon, who is a Principal Consultant with DRG and a Board Certified Master Arborist. Over the years, the city has received heritage tree removal permits and the process is difficult to navigate for both staff and applicants. To address these concerns, DRG was contracted to conduct a phased approach to assessing the challenges and opportunities to revising the current ordinance. Phase one included benchmarking ordinances from eight comparison cities, a review of Chapter 12, 14, and ordinances number 636 and number 673, which are collectively known as the logging ordinance, and interviews with key partners and city staff, all of which were completed in the late spring and summer. And finally, phase one will conclude with presentations like this one to explore and discuss some preliminary recommendations. Phase two includes additional engagement with the community through public meetings and an online survey. A project website has been established to communicate the process and share updates. Community members can visit the site to subscribe for updates and opportunities to participate. Based on the information from phase one and two, DRG will suggest revisions to the current ordinance in the form of a draft. The draft ordinance will be coupled with a sequoia study to thoroughly review any potential environmental impacts per the California Environmental Quality Act. Portions of phase four of the project are already underway. The inventory of all city trees was finished in June and will be used in conjunction with iTree Eco, a peer-reviewed software which quantifies some of the ecosystem services provided by the resource, including carbon sequestration, air quality, and stormwater capture. This information will be summarized in an urban forest resource analysis report and provide the necessary information to develop a framework for street tree maintenance, which will identify annual strategies for addressing maintenance needs. This presentation focuses on phase one of the project and is a fact gathering exercise. We will summarize our understanding of what the challenges and opportunities are with current ordinance and discuss what other communities are doing to address these issues and provide some initial recommendations, which we will explore together through discussion in the latter half of this presentation. Before we begin, before we begin, let's review some of the history around Pacifica's urban forestry program and policies. Pacifica City Council adopted the first Heritage Tree Ordinance, Chapter 12, in 1984. There have been three occurrences of revisions to the ordinance since that time. In 1995, city council passed an ordinance to address potential negative outcomes from logging operations within the city. The council unanimously approved ordinance number 636, which defined logging operations and prohibited such operations from occurring within the city. Later, in 1999, ordinance number 673 was amended to include exemptions to the prohibition of logging operations, including for instances where operations are in conjunction with a city permit and necessary for maintaining safety of life or property on both private and city property. Later, in 2006, Chapter 14, Maintenance and Preservation of City Trees was adopted, which provided requirements for the maintenance and preservation of city trees. In 2019, Pacifica became a Tree City USA, which is a designation from the Arbor Day Foundation, which recognizes communities that spend at least $2 per capita on $2 per capita on trees and have a tree ordinance, maintain a tree board or department, and celebrate Arbor Day. In phase one, key partners from across the community were invited to participate in a questionnaire about the challenges and opportunities with the current ordinance. Some were invited to interviews to participate in additional discussion. We had discussions with city departments, including Parks, Beaches, and Recreation, Public Works, Planning, and North County Fire, city commissions, including commissions for planning, parks, beaches, and recreation, emergency preparedness and safety, and advisory committees, including beautification and open space and park land, nonprofits, including Tree City Pacifica, Pacific Beach Coalition, Climate Committee, Rotary Climate Action Team, and the Chamber of Commerce, and other partner agencies, including Cow Fire, Golden Gate National Recreation Area, PG&E, Pacifica School District, North Coast County Water District, Homeowners Associations, and residents through the webpage. DRG has created a matrix which summarizes the various components of tree ordinances across the US. We developed this tool to explore protections for trees and specific components of tree ordinances and for use in reviewing and developing ordinances. The matrix currently includes example language and strategies from 21 communities, including the benchmark communities that were added by this project through request or discussion with the Pacifica staff and early engaged stakeholders. The eight benchmark cities were selected based on DRG's knowledge of existing ordinances, suggestions by city staff and key stakeholders, and location and demographic characteristics, including Northern California coastal communities, size, climate, and region. In addition to the benchmark cities, DRG used the overall matrix to explore Pacifica's ordinances. The eight benchmark communities, four of which are coastal communities, included City of Pacific Grove, Morro Bay, Monterey, Half Moon Bay, Mountain View, Roseville, Palo Alto, and Town of Los Gatos. These communities have ordinances that provide protections for trees on private property through the designation of heritage tree or similar terminology, and establish rules for public trees. Please keep in mind that four of these communities are charter cities, which may allow for greater local control over regulations. Because the benefits of trees transcend property lines, many communities have ordinances to protect trees on private property from damage and removal. Tree preservation ordinances generally are intended to preserve large trees on private property for the sake of conserving canopy cover and the benefits that provides. A heritage tree designation is usually applied to trees that require special recognition and protection. Beginning with Chapter 12, the key provisions under review include the following: definition of heritage tree, methodology for measuring trees, removal permit review, notification of removal applications, fees, and penalties, tree protection plans, and mitigation measures. In the following slides, we'll explore each of these provisions in greater detail, including input we received from stakeholders during this first phase and soft recommendations identified by staff and DRG. In Pacifica, current ordinance protects nearly all trees on private property greater than 16 inches in diameter, excluding eucalyptus. Ordinance directs that trees are measured 24 inches above natural grade and defines all of these trees as heritage trees. In comparison with other communities, including seven of the communities that we benchmarked for this project, the definition heritage tree or similar terminology is reserved more specifically for trees of unusual size, species, historical or cultural significance, or wildlife habitat. Trees that do not meet the heritage tree definition are more commonly considered protected trees. Additionally, some stakeholders that we have engaged to date have expressed that providing protections for heritage trees as currently defined is hugely beneficial to the community. However, labeling all of these trees as heritage trees does not recognize those trees that are exceptional and that have greater significance to the community. Initial recommendations from staff and DRG to address the concerns raised in phase one include changing the current title of Chapter 12 from Preservation of Heritage Trees to Tree Preservation. This would allow for adding consideration for a new definition for protected tree, which would encompass all trees currently defined as heritage trees. A heritage tree would be redefined to recognize trees of greater significance to the community. For discussion, which will follow this presentation, we will ask you to consider the following questions. Should the title of Chapter 12 be revised to Tree Preservation? Should there be an additional definition for a protected tree? Should the definition of heritage tree be more specifically defined? The current method for determining a heritage tree is by measuring the diameter of the trunk at 24 inches above natural grade. The industry standard is to measure trees at four and a half feet above grade, also known as DBH or diameter abreast type. Among the benchmark communities, five are using the industry standard. Initial recommendations from staff and DRG are to adopt the industry standard for measuring the diameter at 54 inches above natural grade or DBH. For discussion, we will ask you to consider, should the city adopt the industry standard for measuring trees' diameter at 54 inches above grade? The current criteria used to review an application for tree removal includes evaluation of general health and good forestry practices. This somewhat vague direction leaves room for subjectivity and concerns for equitable application. Staff identified this as a concern early in the project and requested more specific direction to improve the process. Except for Mountain View, all benchmark communities include specific evaluation criteria in the ordinance. Palo Alto and Roseville also require that an arborist report be submitted with removal permit applications. Whereas the Town of Los Gatos, Mountain View, and Pacific Grove may require an arborist report at the discretion of the director or if the reason for the removal is due to a pest or pathogen. DRG and staff recommend clarifying the criteria for which removal permit applications are reviewed. This will reduce any subjectivity when evaluating removal applications and increase transparency. Additionally, if applications to remove a tree are based on pests, pathogens, or poor health, an arborist report is recommended. This additional review would ensure that a trained professional has evaluated the tree and confirmed that health or pest concerns cannot be reasonably mitigated. For discussion, we will ask you to consider, should staff identify criteria to be clarified to reduce unnecessary subjectivity in the tree removal permit process, such as good forestry practices? And should an arborist report be required when a request for removal of a protected tree is based on health, pest, pathogen, and/or when a tree is a heritage tree? Notification of pending removals is important because it provides neighbors and other concerned residents an opportunity to weigh in on decisions for the removal of heritage trees. Current ordinance requires that residents immediately adjacent to a tree, subject to a tree removal application, are mailed a notification. Any person making a special written request shall also be notified. Trees pending removal must also have a notice posted near the tree within public view and the city must then allow a minimum of seven days for the filing of a written notice of appeal. During phase one, some stakeholders express concern that sometimes notices are being posted in an inconspicuous place and that the process does not provide adequate opportunity for community-wide transparency and common. Pacifica's current requirements are aligned with benchmark communities and that none require community-wide notification. Mountain View, like Pacifica, does require that a notice be posted on the tree affected or within the public's view. Palo Alto and Mountain View both provide a list of pending removals on their city websites. These lists include the address and the reason for the proposed removal. This practice is not required by ordinance, but proactively providing accessibility to the list for pending removals can reduce the time required by staff to Can reduce the time required by staff to provide notification to adjacent property owners. And community members who have submitted written special requests. Additionally, an online notification system would provide greater transparency for the removal of heritage and protected trees. While properties directly adjacent to heritage trees are most impacted by removal. As these properties receive the most direct benefits. The preservation of individual trees is also critical to sustaining and expanding canopy cover. And the benefits that are provided to the greater community. Because the removal of individual trees impacts the overall canopy cover. Having a notification process that allows for greater community involvement and transparency could help to preserve existing canopy. Staff and DRG recommend consideration for providing a web-based system. That would allow all concerned residents to sign up for notifications for pending removal permits. This recommendation would require additional consideration of impacts to staff time and resources. For your consideration later in the presentation, we will ask what revision should be made to the notification process. For development and new construction projects, Pacifica code currently requires protection of roots within the drip line of a heritage tree. The drip line is not defined, but the term is generally understood as the roots and soil within the perimeter of the canopy. For most trees, approximately one third of its biomass is found in the root system. Protecting the entire tree, including the critical root zone, is vital to tree health and vigor. Using the drip line to define the area of protection underestimates the critical root zone of most landscaped trees. The critical root zone is defined as the minimum area of retained roots necessary for maintaining tree health. The American National Standards Institute, or ANSI, defines the tree protection zone as an area to be retained and protected to maintain tree health. The current standard, ANSI A three hundred part five construction for defining the tree protection zone. Is determined by the trunk formula method. Where the diameter of the tree is multiplied by one and a half feet to define the tree protection radius. Which is then used to calculate the area around the tree. Where no construction activities, compaction, or storage of construction materials, or other activities can occur. All but one of the benchmark communities require the trees be protected during construction. Of the communities that require protection, more than half require a tree protection plan. And three require compliance with industry standards. DRD, DRG's recommendation is to adopt industry standards for the protection of heritage and protected trees during construction. We ask you, should the city adopt ANSI A three hundred part five construction? Fees for applying for a removal permit or for appealing a permit are generally in line with what other communities are charging. These fees are adjusted by council annually and reflect the cost of staff time to process applications. As a result, DRG and staff are not recommending any changes to the fee structure. Per the current ordinance, violations of chapter twelve. Including illegal tree removal or otherwise causing irreparable harm. Are subject to penalties of no more than one thousand dollars. Imprisonment not exceeding six months or civil penalties. Stakeholders communicated that the current fine of one thousand dollars is negligible for someone who is intent on removing a tree. And therefore is not a significant deterrent. Six of the eight benchmark communities have penalties for illegally removing city trees, protected trees, and heritage trees. Palo Alto and Los Gatos both have a penalty of five thousand dollars or the replacement cost of the tree, whichever is higher. Replacement value is determined per the most recent version of the Council of Tree and Landscape, CTLA. Guide for plant appraisal. The guide has industry-wide consensus for the guidance of plant appraisal and is generally accepted in North America. Other communities set the monetary penalty based on the recommendation of the city arborist. Standards adopted by council. Or by the standards of valuation of amenity trees, which is an outdated method replaced by the guide for plant appraisal. Our recommendation is to review ways to de-incentivize tree removals and review establishment of a tree fund. Where penalties collected can be deposited and used to plant trees and provide maintenance for city trees. Or promote the preservation of the urban forest. For discussion, we will ask you to consider, should staff study ways to de-incentivize illegal tree removals? And should staff review establishment of a tree fund? Because trees take a long time to reach maturity. Ideally, healthy trees are protected from removal and preserved wherever possible. Yet sometimes the removal of a tree is warranted. In these instances, effort should be made to mitigate the loss of a tree and the benefits it provides. Staff report that approximately fifty percent of heritage trees that are removed in Pacifica are replaced with at least one tree. All eight benchmark communities have some standard for replacement. Either based on a ratio or based on canopy loss. And six explicitly require at least one replacement tree. Most allow in lieu fees in instances where a site cannot accommodate additional trees. And/or a property owner does not want a tree. In lieu fees are determined in these communities either by a value determined by council resolution. Or the director, or based on the value of the tree. In lieu fees can be deposited into a dedicated account. Or tree fund that is used to fund planting, maintenance, or preservation of the urban forest. DRG and staff recommend replacement of otherwise healthy trees with two trees. Additionally, we recommend reviewing ways to ensure replacement trees remain healthy. When trees cannot be replaced on site, we recommend establishing a fees. Later, we will ask you to consider. Should Pacifica require a two-to-one replacement for the removal of an otherwise healthy heritage-protected or city tree? And should staff review establishing a process for maintenance of replacement trees? Lastly, should staff review establishing in lieu fees for trees that cannot be replaced on site? Chapter fourteen, currently titled Maintenance and Preservation of City Trees. Provides guidance for the care and maintenance of trees. The ordinance does not currently provide protections for city trees that do not meet the definition of heritage tree. The current title of chapter fourteen is Maintenance and Preservation of City Trees. If we accept the aforementioned recommendations to revise chapter twelve, including changing that title to tree preservation. Then the preservation of all trees, including city trees, is consolidated under that chapter. To reduce redundancy and better clarify intent. The title of chapter fourteen should be revised to remove reference to preservation. Five of the eight benchmark communities have ordinance that are specific to the care and management of city trees. Moro Bay includes tree preservation and city tree protections in the single ordinance. In conjunction with the recommendation to change the title of chapter twelve to tree preservation. We recommend changing the title of chapter fourteen from Maintenance and Preservation of City Trees to Tree Ordinance. We will ask you, should chapter fourteen title be changed to Tree Ordinance? Chapter fourteen does not clearly define city policy for the roles and responsibilities for the care of city trees and park strips. Including the responsibility of the director for administration and decision-making. The responsibility of the city for the routine care and maintenance of city trees. And the responsibility of the adjacent property owner for watering and maintaining the park strip. Because the current ordinance does not define these responsibilities. Expectations are not clear. And some duties might be assumed to be the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. This can lead to improper or excessive pruning, including topping. Topping is an especially harmful pruning practice as it results in cutting back large diameter branches. Or subordinating the main stem. Which can make a tree unsafe, vulnerable to pests and pathogens, and result in decline or death. With some exceptions, the majority of our benchmark communities do not specifically define roles and responsibilities. However, many communities are currently seeking to clarify these roles during ordinance review. We are not recommending any changes to current responsibilities. We are recommending that existing responsibilities be more specifically defined for the director, the city, and the adjacent property owner. For discussion, we will ask you to consider, should the responsibility for the care of city trees be more clearly defined? The current ordinance does not require a permit. Or define a process for allowing residents to plant trees in the public rights of way. Historically, residents have planted trees in the right of way without coordinating with the city. While the city values partnership with residents, a coordinated effort and policies for tree planting can prevent the planting of public trees. That are poorly suited for the local climate or individual sites. And avoid the introduction of nuisance or invasive species. The right tree planted in the wrong place can result in negative consequences, including higher demand and costs for maintenance. To reinforce planting the right tree in the right place, all but one of the benchmark communities require a permit to plant trees in public rights of way. To encourage good species selection and proper tree planting practices. DRG and staff recommend that a permit be a requirement for residents wishing to plant a tree in the public rights of way. During the discussion, we will ask you to consider, should the city require residents obtain a permit to plant a tree in the public rights of way? Ordinance number six three six, adopted in nineteen ninety-five, defines logging as. Excuse me, logging operations as any removal, destruction, or harvesting of twenty or more trees within one year. From any parcel or contiguous parcels in the same ownership within the city of Pacifica. And prohibits logging operations within the city. Later, in nineteen ninety-nine, ordinance number six seven three was adopted. Which provided some exceptions to ordinance number six three six. Including for emergency response, maintaining public health and safety. And when said operations are in conjunction with a city permit or permits requiring the planning commission. And/or city council approval. These two ordinances are collectively referred to as the logging ordinance. The key provision under review for the logging ordinance is redundant code. Based on DRG's understanding of the logging ordinance, we believe that it is redundant. In instances where property owners wish to remove more than twenty trees from any contiguous parcel or parcels in one year. If those trees meet the definition of a heritage tree, the resident must also apply for a removal permit for each tree. So essentially, this ornament seems to require two permits for the removal of the same tree. In addition, none of the other benchmark communities have a logging ordinance. We recommend reducing redundant code. Later, we will ask you to consider the following question. Should staff review and reduce redundant code? At this time, we will review questions and encourage discussion. So as Sam said at the beginning, we'll have the commissioner chairs. Field these questions, we'll have seventeen for input. So beginning with our first topic, which was the heritage tree definition. Our reminder, our recommendations are to change chapter title to tree preservation. Define protected tree, redefine heritage tree. And our questions for you are, should the title of chapter twelve be revised to tree preservation? Should there be an additional definition for a protected tree? And should the definition of heritage tree be more specifically defined?
Thank you, Mr. So is the. Is your intent that we sort of go section by section here and just rotate through the commissions? Or are we going to go through all seventeen questions with the planning commission and then all seventeen questions with the. With the other committees and commissions that are present here? How did you envision that going?
The chair, chair, what we were trying to do is we were going to go through each section like this. So some sections have like three or two questions and one, some have one, so we would go ahead and do this set of questions.
Okay.
Pose it to each commission or committee and and get their input. And also I just wanted to bring up to the chair that. Committee member Linda Jonas did show up. And she was in the waiting room.
Thank you so much for that and welcome. To be a commission who's joined us, a committee member who's joined us. So I guess we'll start then with this first three sets of questions for the planning commission. I'd ask that my colleagues go ahead as they are inclined to raise their hands so that I can acknowledge them so that we can take these questions out. Let's see here, I'm looking for raised hands. Mr. Godwin, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess my primary issue is around question three. Should the definition of heritage trees be more specifically defined? My belief, belief is the town has an awful lot of trees that would qualify as a heritage tree. And if we use the two dollar or three dollar resident budget, which is fairly typical, a very modest amount of money. So I think we need to seriously consider drastically reducing the number of heritage trees that are covered by this. So it's more in line with resources that are likely to be available. And given we haven't pruned trees in decades in a lot of cases. There's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done. On trees if you drive around town. And I think, you know, the initial. Effort of this ordinance ought to be on trying to. Protect trees from pests, which are their number one issue. Then fire, then a reasonable pruning schedule somewhere around four years. And then worrying about large numbers of trees that are. Aren't. Not in the first group. So I think we need to look at native species, very large trees. And ones that have been here for a long time, possibly even centuries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Mr. Hauser.
Um, thank you, Sharon. So I'll go in order. I do think that chapter twelve should be revised to tree preservation. I do think that there should be an additional definition for a protected tree, and I think that it should be based on size, DBH. I think that might be a future question solver's or until we get to that segment. And should the definition of heritage tree be more specifically defined? Yeah, I would concur that it should be more specifically defined. I agree with staff and with the resource group that if everything's a heritage tree, it does lose some of the specialness.
Thank you. Commissioner Berman.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with everything that Commissioner Hauser just mentioned. Thank you, Chair. I agree with everything that Commissioner Hauser just mentioned. A quick clarification question, I think I understood it correctly, but just to confirm. So if we add the definition of protected tree. Effectively, that would help narrow the definition of heritage tree. In conjunction with defining a heritage tree by the breast height diameter. And then the protected trees would likely be everything that's currently defined as a heritage tree. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. In case anyone else had that similar question, hopefully that helps clarify as well. I'm inclined to support staff's recommendation for all three of these questions.
Thank you, Commission. Commissioner Leo.
Um, I don't have much to add than what's already been said, but I'll run through the three questions. So. Number one, should be revised or the title be renamed, yes. Should there be additional definition for protection tree? Yes, I think kind of what we're trying to reduce here is confusion in the ordinances. So I think additional definition and clarity is, is good. So that actually talks to both the second and third question. So I would say yes to both. I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you, Commissioner. I actually am along the same lines. I'm yes is the first two. And I should have a question with respect to the third, and maybe it's, maybe it's respective in the second and third. Could you very briefly, are there substantive levels of protection? Or I'm sorry, different levels of protection that are going to be posed for a heritage tree versus a protected tree? So what's the substantive difference in terms of protection, given the, you know, the definitions that we might apply to a particular tree?
And that's a great question. So, and that would definitely depend on the community and also commission's wills. Often, there is no difference in protection, but it's just a higher level of recognition. So that you know that when a heritage tree comes before you or the tree commission. That they had, that this is a heritage tree, it has more special significance than just a protected tree. So you would give it a little more consideration. Ideally, that would be minimal. But you could still typically in most communities and every community I'm aware of, you can still remove a heritage tree. For the same reasons that you could remove a protected tree.
Thank you, Ms. McKean, for that clarification. I think that's all the planning commissioners. I'd ask that Commissioner Chair Abbott to go ahead and take it from here.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to, I see hands coming up for our commission members as well. And so I'd like to, actually, before I go off to some of the remarks. I'd like to just mention that something that wasn't talked about very much here in this conversation. Is the intention of the ordinance to encourage quality development. To protect and conserve the attractiveness and aesthetic and scenic beauty and historic atmosphere of the city. And now we also have a number of considerations that are more important even when this ordinance was formed. Which was the benefits here during the climate crisis that we have. So this is a really important topic that we're talking about. And our folks who came before us did a really good job to put us in a place where we have protected our trees. For a very long time. So I'm now going to ask Commissioner Lu Sun if he'd like to make his remarks.
Thank you. First off, thank you for your work and the presentation. It was excellent. And also you've packaged it in a really useful way for all of us. So thank you for that. First, I'll address the questions. I agree with number one to revise to tree preservation. I also agree with number two for an additional definition to show the difference. And as to number three, I do have a question slash comment. It seems that we've, there's a focus on part one of the heritage tree definition, but not part two. So I'd like to understand or at least ask for more work on how is a, what is the wording here? A grove, a tree or grove of trees, including clip this. So how is that determined heritage? At what point does a group of trees become a grove or a forest? Where is the line that defines that? And are there, you know, some policies that you've seen from other cities to show that? So that would be my question. Thank you.
And that's a great question as well. And again, that's something that needs to be determined a little later as we talk to more people and get more feedback. But the definition of a heritage tree often considers things like historical value. So if someone, some historical figure or founding person of the city might have planted the tree. It may be extra old. It may just be a fine specimen of a specific species. It could be a native species that's just an excellent specimen. Things like that make it exceptional. And there's really no set rule about what makes it exceptional. Or what makes it a heritage tree for your community. It, and it should be something that, you know, people come up with that definition, not the definition, but the criteria. And explain and tell the story of that tree. And if there is a significant story, for whatever reason, it should be considered. That possibly that tree is a heritage tree.
All right. Thank you for that. Commissioner Benton Shoemaker.
Thank you. And thank you for the report. It did help clarify many of the. The questions I had from the study session report. I think it's very important to remember that the heritage tree ordinance is a requirement to be a tree city USA. So without a strong heritage tree ordinance, we will not get that designation awarded to us annually. Also, I want to be careful that this heritage tree ordinance is not weakened in any way. We got the designation in twenty nineteen based on a strong ordinance. I would like to see this ordinance updated and made stronger. I think that the definition of heritage tree should be simple and clear. So that people understand it, residents understand it, tree service companies understand it. And I think that. I know we'll be talking about diameter and inches in the next set of questions. But. It is important that we don't reduce the size of heritage trees. And the trees that are considered heritage trees now remain heritage trees. If we want to add, I mean, I've researched other ordinances and some call all their trees protected trees. And call all their trees heritage trees. So it's a matter of language. But if we want to exclude some species because they're invasive, if we want to add some because they are native. I think that that's definitely something to discuss. But in terms of the questions, call it tree preservation, sure. I'm not sure about additional definition for a protected tree. I really, I've also noticed in all ordinances that city trees and private trees have the same ordinance. So any kind of designation in that way doesn't make sense. And should a heritage tree be more specifically defined as long as it doesn't weaken the ordinance? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see Commissioner Kellogg's hand yet, so I'll make my comments and see if he's going to make comments as well. On the question of the name of the ordinance, I, I think that I, I'm going to say no. And that I think that people understand what a heritage tree is. And if you're looking for an ordinance and for information and a way to educate yourself on what you're trying to find. I, I think that that's just a common term used throughout cities and for a very long period of time. So I hope, I think it helps define what that chapter is about. And I think education and clarity with all of these ordinances is really important. Additional definitions for a protected tree. I'm too not really quite sure what the need for that is. I see a lot of definitions here about heritage trees. The grove of trees or a single sentinel tree that could be standing out. So currently I see some of that language in the ordinance today. Though certainly any additional clarification for the public that's easy to understand is always helpful. And again, I think that that should have maybe more emphasis on that grove of tree conversation that was brought up earlier. So that we understand what that might mean. Could a grove of tonian trees? That are actually maybe very small in their trunk size, but are significant in a native tree. Be something that we should be thinking about protecting and preserving. And again, any additional definition is, is very helpful. I certainly don't think that the reworking of this ordinance should be removing trees from this status. And if anything, I would recommend going to something that would potentially add some trees to this status. Let's see, Commissioner Kellogg.
Yeah, I think I'd say yes. So one, two, and three, I just think anything that could reduce any subjectivity would help. And I think two and three would definitely do that.
Great. Thank you. I'm now going to turn this over to Chair Moses.
Thank you very much. Let me just go through and see who have the BAC. Do we have any comments? I'm sorry, I didn't.
I see member Gossage with her hand up.
Okay, thank you. Yes, BAC committee member Gossage, please go ahead.
Hi. I would say my thoughts are I would recommend that the chapter be revised for tree preservation. It's more inclusive. Because I would support number two, which is adding an additional definition for a protected tree. And defining that differently from a heritage tree. It's a common practice against in many municipalities. Often based on either species and or size or some of the other characteristics that were noted. I've also seen a difference, I would also support a difference in the mitigation requirements between the two. The removal of a protected tree may incur a lesser mitigation value than that of a heritage tree. Which puts a greater emphasis on that tree.
Thank you. Great. And okay, and fortunately, I'm not seeing any other. So I, I will go ahead just on these questions that whatever definitions we're providing to. Residents of the city of Pacifica that they'd be very clear. And so we cut down on questions and sort of grace, gray areas. And that, that's all that I have.
Thank you, Chair Moses. I think that's, that takes us through the bodies here. And I guess, Miss Dear, does this come back to you at this point for our next set of questions?
Yeah, we'll move to the next set of questions. So next we considered the methodology for measuring trees. And a reminder that our recommendation is adopt industry standard for measuring a tree diameter at fifty-four inches above natural grade. And your question is, should the city adopt the industry standard for measuring tree diameter at fifty-four inches above ground?
Thank you, Miss Dear. We'll go ahead then and quickly through the planning commission. I'll start with my colleague, Commissioner Hauser.
Thank you, Chair. So I would be strongly in favor of adopting the diameter at breast height standard that's industry. I do want to qualify that with. An acknowledgement that, you know, cities like Sebastopol, for example, use ten inches at DBH as what qualifies a tree. And I think that being a tree city, it's really important that we don't pick, you know, we don't go from sixteen inches at twenty-four. Above ground to sixteen inches at fifty-four. I think we need to get smaller than that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Commissioner Berman.
Thank you. My vote is yes on adopting the industry standard for measuring. Trees at fifty-four inches, which is roughly breast height.
Thank you. Let's see, Commissioner Godwin.
I also agree that we should adopt the industry standard for measuring trees. It would certainly make things easier for tree companies and citizens to understand how we're doing this.
Thank you. Commissioner Leo.
Same thing. I would be in favor in adopting industry standards where we can as part of this ordinance. I know that will come up probably later in the questions as well. So I say yes to this one. Thanks.
Thank you. See here, I guess that leads me and I'd say I agree with everything my colleagues have said. I did have a quick question for the, for Miss Dear perhaps, and Ms. McKean. I'm changing the, the height at which we're measuring, is that going to have any impact in, well, will it reduce in any ways? The number of trees that might qualify as protected or, or given that we're going to be measuring at a different point? Or any sense of what that might do in terms of the number of trees that qualifies protected?
That it could slightly, it would depend on the tree and how much of a buttress it has and how large it is. Typically, a smaller tree is not going to be affected as much as a larger tree would be. That makes sense.
I, I think it does. Thank you. I appreciate it. Let's see here. I guess I'll turn it over to Chair Abbott. Thank you.
Looking for hands as those come up. And there's one for Commissioner Benton Shoemaker.
Um, yeah, I think that this question is only part of the issue. Because the industry standard is at fifty-four inches above ground. But what diameter are we talking about? Many cities have twelve inches at fifty-four inches above ground. And Commissioner Hauser talked about cities with ten inches above ground. A tree, when you measure it way down at the bottom, is going to be much wider than at DBH. Which is, you know, right at, at breast height. So in order to really give a good response, we need to know what the diameter is. I would suggest nothing more than twelve. In order to have an equivalent of the heritage tree ordinance that we had before. And by that I mean twelve inches diameter at fifty-four inches above grade.
Thank you, Commissioner Lu Sun.
Yeah, my question on this is maybe back to the consultants. Is it adequate to just be looking at the diameter of a tree and the consideration of this? I'm not an arborist, but aren't there some types of trees that may grow, you know, for even longer? But stay as a smaller thinner tree? I know in speaking to some people in the community, things like a toion, a willow, pointed out to me that. Could be hundreds of years old, but still be thinner than the beneficial we have here. So is, is size adequate as the only factor that we're looking at for a tree?
It's, it is common to have size determined for a protected tree. However, with heritage trees, you can allow a broader definition. So you could include things like a grove of toion as a reasonable definition for a heritage tree. If that makes sense. And you are currently, you're measuring trees at twenty-five or twenty-four inches above grade. So to change it to four and a half feet is not, is not going to change the diameter measurement that much. It, it will change it, but it, most of that change is going to happen on larger trees that have much larger buttresses. Rather than younger trees. So an eighteen inch tree typically is probably not going to have more than a couple inches of difference between twenty-four inches and four and a half feet. That's not going to be true in all cases.
Thank you for helping to clarify. And I also think that we should go for the industry standard. And I too think that the diameter should be less than it is now. I think the twelve inches or ten as was recommended or suggested by a planning commissioner is a good idea. And then in that definition, I too would like to see how a small grove of slow growing smaller trees works into that. So consistent with Commissioner Lu Sun. And now Commissioner Kellogg.
I might have missed this earlier. If we were to apply this measurement standard today, how would that affect the number of heritage trees that we have? Would that reduce the number or be felt not not affected? For anyone can answer that.
So currently, heritage trees are defined as all of the trees that are over sixteen inches at twenty-four inches. If you accept the new definition of a heritage tree, then heritage tree would be defined differently. And a protected tree would become all of the trees that would replace the definition of heritage trees. So heritage tree could have a slightly different definition. Or more.
I think Ms. McKean, he was probably asking something along the lines I was asking earlier. And that is if we were measuring it twelve inches or ten inches at fifty-four inches as opposed to where we're currently measuring, would that have an impact on the number of protected trees? Let's just say, generically.
It may, but again, it's going to be dependent on species. If you were measuring at ten inches above grade, obviously, there'd be, or maybe not so obviously, there'd be a greater difference because trees have a taper at the bottom that increases that width at the base of the tree. Now, when a tree is younger, they don't have as much of a taper. As they get older, they're going to have even more. And so that inches between those two measurements is going to increase as the size of the tree increases typically.
Okay, that was my only question. Honestly, I really don't have an opinion on question number four.
Commissioner Kellogg, Chair Moses.
Thank you. BAC Committee Member Gossage, go ahead.
I would also add to put a definition and clarification for multi-trunk trees that diverge below the fifty-four inch diameter breast height metric. I've seen it written where you are taking the diameter of each of these trunks. You take the largest and you might add that to half the sum of the other trunks. Sometimes you might just add all of the trunks in at that, but I would I would define that so it's clear. And then I would also recommend the inclusion of groves for trees such as willows. So willow sossels can be preserved. It may be based on a square foot area or other smaller diameter trees to also be acknowledged as beneficial to the habitat of the area.
Great, thank you very much. See, I do believe any other BAC folks have comment. And I would concur that we should stick with industry standards. Taking into mind the comments that have been already made, such as establishing the diameters at that fifty-four inch DBH. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Moses. I guess, Miss Dear, it's back to you for our next question or question.
Thank you, Commissioner. The next topic that we discussed was the removal permit review. Our recommendations are clarify more specific evaluation criteria and require an arborist report when a permit is being requested to remove a protected tree based on poor health, pest, pathogen, or when the tree is also a heritage tree. And our questions for you are, should staff identify criteria to be clarified to reduce unnecessary subjectivity in the tree removal permit process, such as good forestry practices? And number six, should an arborist report be required when a request for removal of a protected tree is based on health, pest, pathogen, and/or when a tree is a heritage tree?
Thank you, Miss Dear, for those questions. I'll go ahead and turn to my colleagues then on the planning commission. Commissioner Leo.
So in terms of the first question, I would just say yes, remove any unnecessary subjectivity, period. I think if there's what I would suggest is, and I don't know if there are, but if there are references to good forestry practices, for example, like referenceable sources, definitely include that if we want to keep it flexible to adopt to changing standards in the future. I think referencing trusted resources is probably a good thing. So as those change, then then our ordinance also adopts to to whatever requires those changes. Number six. So I agree with the arborist report for based on health and pest or pathogen. Because to me, that would then probably deem whether it exists or not and would then be able to be grounds for approving or denying the permit. What I didn't understand is the inclusion of a heritage tree here and what the benefit of the arborist report would be in that scenario. If if the if it's on private property, the property owner wants to remove a heritage tree for a reason other than health and pest or pathogen, what is the benefit of the of the arborist report in that scenario? And how would it be used or how do we foresee that being used? It would be my question because if we include that, then it may add another layer of requirement that may not be necessary or may not actually help the the cause and of what we're trying to accomplish. So that's a question that it can be answered, but that's just my feedback. I'm kind of, I agree with the first half of the question, but the heritage tree part, I don't fully understand.
And maybe, Miss Dear, you or Ms. McKean could speak to that.
Sure. And it's a reasonable question. It would just add another layer of information when it is a heritage tree. So if you're saying that tree is more significant than just a regular protected tree, it just gives you a little more information. Again, it's it's going to be a choice of stakeholders in the community, whether that's something they want or not. It definitely is more important when it's a health or a pest or pathogen issue because it's sometimes hard for for someone who's a layman to understand whether something can be mitigated reasonably or not. So and the same applies to heritage trees. So again, it's just another layer of protection and information.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo. Ms. McKean, thank you for that answer. Commissioner Hauser.
I'm, I agree with Commissioner Leo. We should always be clear and not have unnecessary subjectivity. For item six, I think this is one that needs a little bit more clarification. So and I appreciate the answer we just got. So I think that an arborist report does require or does provide good information. And I think one of the committee members had made the point that we should not differentiate between private and public trees. And I agree with that. I think that we're going to require an arborist report. It should be required for all trees. I think we should definitely require it for removal of heritage trees. And I want to say that we should do it for protected trees. But I would note that having an arborist come out is an expense. It's pretty expensive, especially if you're the owner of a single family home and you're removing one tree. You know, you're often charged for like a day's worth of work because the arborist has to come out. They write their report. I just, I don't know. I want to make sure that it doesn't create an undue hardship for homeowners that maybe can't afford to hire an arborist. So I don't know how you rectify it because I do think that it requires that it adds good information, but I'm unsure.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Commissioner Berman.
Thank you. My answer for question number five is yes. I also want to add, as we start to talk about and develop the permit process for removing trees, that we look at protected trees separately and at the same time as heritage trees. I like the idea, I think Commissioner Hauser mentioned it, of having a separate set of requirements for protected trees to still incentivize the protection of protected trees. But of course, maybe stricten- strickening those requirements for heritage trees in the permit process there. For question six, I, yes, I think an arborist report should be required. I think from my personal experience, because I'm not an arborist nor a landscape architect, an arborist report is helpful to understand just the general health of a tree. And then I know later, we're all, we will also be talking about what the replacement requirements will be for removing heritage trees or even and also protected trees. I think it'll, depending on the subjectivity there on how replacement tree or in lieu fee is decided, I think it will also relate to the health of the tree that you're removing. If a property owner is proposing to remove a healthy heritage tree, I think the the cost of that should be pretty significant compared to a property owner has to remove a heritage tree because it's it's at risk of falling due to a pest. So that's that's my suggestion for question six.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Commissioner Godwin.
Yeah, I agree with my other commissioners that question five should be yes, and it should be linked to a set of good forestry pack practices that are defined. I think requiring an arborist for section ship six is probably excessive expense, excessively expensive and bureaucratic for me. So I'd be inclined against that. But I would ask that we would also include fire risk in that question because that could be a reason to remove trees that are that is reasonable.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Yeah, I agree with my colleagues with respect to question five. Ask staff to identify criteria and clarify to reduce unnecessary subjectivity. With question six, you know, I tend to agree with Commissioner Godwin that there may be circumstances where certainly when an arborist report is needed, I think that we absolutely positively should have the ability to require one. You know, I don't know the best way to frame it, require it and give the director the ability to waive the requirement when it's kind of manifestly obvious to the to the to staff that a report isn't actually going to be necessary to sort of decide one way or the other with respect to the application. You know, I I would ask that we consider something like that. With that said, I'll turn it over to.
Chair, if you might, sorry, your your comment dislodged another question that I had.
Please go ahead.
To number six, currently, I guess, what is the process? Is it that the planning department or someone from Public Works will come out to a property and look at a tree and confirm if it's a heritage tree? Or who determines currently if there isn't a requirement for an arborist to determine just what a tree's health is or what a tree type is, whether it's heritage or not? Who does that right now?
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Maybe Mr. Baptiste or perhaps somebody else could help us with that.
Sure. So currently, if a an arborist report does is submitted to the city, are we we had an arborist from the Parks Department that would go out and take a look at the tree? Currently, we do have one person on staff that can go out and observe and inspect the tree. So we do have somebody on staff to do that.
Okay, thank you. Then I forgot to mention earlier. I do also appreciate and agree with what Commissioner Godwin said. I mean, for a single family homeowner, which there's a lot of in Pacifica, it could be a pretty significant cost to hire an arborist to come out to look at one tree. But at the same time, I also want to appreciate that city staff currently is very busy with a lot of initiatives. And I'm not sure what hardship it is currently for for that arborist or forestry representative to kind of go to each property as needed.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman, for that really helpful follow up. And I'll ask Chair Abbott to go ahead and take a few.
I'm looking at hands. I see Commissioner Benton Schumaker first.
You know, with at PBNRV here, appeals. And it's very important to have an ISA basic tree assessment report to really understand if a tree is high risk or extreme risk, moderate or low. And personally, I, well, actually, many cities have policy just to remove extreme and high risk trees and preserve and protect moderate and low risk trees. And those cities that have that policy have very few tree appeals. So in those cases, it is important to have a tree risk assessed by a track certified arborist who is independent and impartial, not hired by one homeowner or another. If in some other cities, staff who are arborists can go out and help homeowners with with the assessment and then testify at a tree appeal. And so many are advocating that the city have an arborist on staff who can play that role. And that could solve the problem so that people don't have to hire arborists for every tree with a permit that has been submitted. But I think it's very important that we understand which trees are high in extreme risk and which are moderate and low. Thanks.
Okay, next, that Commissioner Lu Sun.
Definitely agree with number five, taking away some subjectivity. So I appreciate that. I want to echo Commissioner Leo on, you know, the the inclusion of an arborist report when perhaps, you know, the request for removal isn't really pertinent. So if it's not about the health and the pest, the pathogen, if it's other reasons, you know, I don't want to create undue cost. I think, you know, Commissioner Hauser mentioned this as well. I'm a little concerned about the unintended consequences of that requirement. At the same time, you know, we do get a lot of these that come to us. And sometimes we have these competing arborist reports to say two completely opposite things. So, you know, I think Commissioner Benton Schumaker brings up a really valid point. I do not know what the solution to that is. I I want to throw out maybe for number six, there's some sort of discretionary decision on the requirement for the inclusion of an arborist by the overseeing commission. The other question or comment I have on this is something that's come up a number of times in the appeals are some other implications of tree removal that I think we are not qualified to really be weighing in on but get brought up into the mix. So things like landslide risk, ecosystem impacts of, you know, local wildlife, watershed impacts, wind patterns has been brought up a couple of times where you move one tree and how that may affect the stability of others. You know, like these things get brought up and they seem like very valid points of discussion. But we do not have a, I don't feel that we're too appropriately to assess those correctly. So I don't know how that gets included in. I wanted to bring it up. Thank you.
Commissioner Kellogg.
Yeah, I think we should do number five. And with number six, I agree with Commissioner Schumaker. I do, I when I when we when we do hear appeals, I kind of find it, I don't see much help in these arborist report, although I think we should have one. It's just the problem is we don't really have direction on how to act on these reports. Like if it's the, a lot from my experience, most of the reports are moderate risk. And that really doesn't give me much information on how to act with the with with the appeals. You know, if it's a high risk, then we would know a certain type of direction. I think something like that would help.
Great, thank you. Certainly, yes, clarity, good for everybody. And I think part of that question too was if it should apply to city versus private trees. And I think that the criteria should be the same for all trees, regardless of where they are planted. And I do think that an arborist report should be required particularly for heritage trees. And I would also like to add in that qualifier that that should be done by an independent arborist, not tree services who are looking for the business. Potentially, there could be a trusted list of independent arborists that the city could steer folks to so that we don't have that issue of competing. so that we don't have that issue of competing reports. So absolutely important for a heritage tree for any request to remove a heritage tree and then protected, since that's a different category, maybe that has a little bit of wiggle room there. Chair Moses.
Thank you. So BAC, BAC member Ryan. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for all of the comments. I'm learning a lot tonight about this. And I just wanted to say I agree with everybody on on five, more clarity, wonderful, less subjectivity, great. But I just wanted to make a comment on on number six and kind of whatever decision more informed experts make on what direction this goes, I I wanted to just reinforce comments that have been made already about undue burden, both in process and cost on residents throughout Pacifica, you know, where this will be a substantial a substantial process for them in whatever direction they're going, not to mention making sure that whatever direction this goes, the process is designed also to make sure that the reports are actually actionable for the group. So both careful design and making sure that process steps, time that goes into it, research that they might need to do, how to access this list, that those things are all really considered for our residents as well as, of course, of course, cost, making sure it then hits the criteria that the many experts in this room virtual room and said that it needs to hit in order to be meaningful, both for our our trees and in our community. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. BAC member Gossage.
Hi, good discussion. I would say that it sounds like number five is well supported. Number six, it was interesting discussion, the way this question is phrased right now, it sounds like right now, an arborist report, the proposal is that the arborist report would only be required when the removal for a protected tree is based on the health or a pest or pathogen or required for all heritage trees. It sounds like that would limit the need for arborist reports to be generated as they may not be needed for all conditions. I think another good point to consider for those moving forward in in this development of the ordinance is to is that comment that was made regarding the lost my train of thought. The removal, if it's made for another reason that isn't identified here, that an arborist could flag, that could lead to more detriment to the community, such as the landslide or some or fire reasons or some of the other causes that were listed.
Great. Thank you. BAC committee member Jonas. Go ahead.
Well, as it happens, I'm the last house on Laredo Way next to Ortega School. And probably 20 years or more ago, my neighbor hit us up with wanting to get rid of two what would been heritage trees in our backyard. From his yard, they looked like they were leaning toward his house. And he had some concerns about the safety and all that. And I remember at the time, we had to go through the city and have notifications sent to all the neighbors within a certain area to make sure nobody was going to vote against us doing that. And it wasn't exactly a cheap process to have those two trees removed. And so I have a little bit of concern if you're going to have an arborist report that's very costly, that that might be a problem for some residents to consider getting rid of something like that, that a tree that could fall over onto your home. So I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have, okay. So I just want to make sure that it's clear when we're talking about should staff, the the who who is staff is, are we talking about public works or a contracted arborist going out and making these decisions about the various criteria for tree removal permits? And then on number six, again, as with everybody else, I think funding is going to be important, whether it's residents having to pay for an arborist or even the city, is the city going to have the necessary funds to pay for this? And then to make sure that whatever criteria is established for these removal decisions, that it's very transparent again, and that everybody knows what sort of criteria is involved, especially for private landowners. Thank you.
I guess it's back to back to me then, and I guess back to Myster. I will take note that we, I think we're making a, you know, we're obviously getting some really good material here. It is about 7:40 and we are at question, I guess we're headed into question seven of, I believe, 17. So so I'm, while I think it's important for us all to share our our points, we probably do want to think about as much conciseness as possible so that the public has a isn't too exhausted by the time we get to them. So Myster, I'll ask you to queue up the next questions for.
Thank you, Commissioner. As a reminder, the next item we discussed was the notification of removal applications. And our recommendation is to develop a revised notification process for pending removal applications. And we ask you what revision should be made, if any, to the notification process, website notification, 300 foot notification radius, or something else, other.
Thank you, Ms. Dear. I'll ask my colleagues on the planning commission to offer any comments. Commissioner Berman.
Thank you. I think we we should enhance the notification process. I would support a 300 foot radius notification area. I have hesitations with the website notification, not specifically for posting notification on a website, but for posting people's addresses on the website, especially if there's heritage tree removals pending on a single family home, private property. I I have hesitations on that with both privacy and safety for an individual that lives there.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser.
So I actually didn't think of what Commissioner Berman just said, but I think it's a good point, and I'll concur with her on both counts.
Thank you. I've myself got anything to add. As you know, the planning commissioners perhaps hands up, I'll turn it over to Chair Abbott.
Looking for hands from PBNR Commissioner, Commissioner Benton Shoemaker.
I agree that notification should be expanded. In many cities, they do put on a website which trees are slated for removal with their ratings and reasons. And this gives transparency to the community of why trees are being removed. I think if it's just the address and there's no other information about the families, it should be totally fine. It's a practice that's accepted in other cities. In as well as expanding notification, I think it is very important that the number of days for appeal be expanded from seven days to three weeks. Seven days is not enough time for someone to gather enough information to make a knowledgeable appeal. And so appeals are made in a rushed fashion. Three weeks is a standard with other cities that gives people enough time to find out about a tree and make an appeal if they need to do it.
For Commissioner Lee.
I just have the concern that 300 feet is not always adequate for some of our locations that may be further from communities of interest in those trees. So you know, I think there's some special cases that might want consideration, especially when we're talking about grows. So thank you.
I'm going to concur with the comments that I've heard here from PBNR commissioners that the notification process for transparency, one of the city's goals should be increased. I think the website is a great idea, and I've seen that used in other places as well. And I would agree that maybe more than 300 feet would be important for those larger sentinel or groves of trees. And I think it's really important on that notification to include what to do about it. Right now, the notifications don't include a lot of information such as the website to reach out to, what the appeal process is. Doesn't have enough detail today. And I think it would be important to list the reason that the tree is being suggested for removal as well. Doesn't look like any other hands from the PBNR commission. So Chair Moses.
Thank you very much. All right. BAC member Hoffman. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I am, I think the first thing I'm thinking is transparency is is a really valuable direction to go. And I just wanted to propose to people here that there's other ways that we can talk about location other than address. So for example, playing around with a website like what rewards, which gives every kind of square meter of the world that you need compensation in the world. So is the address component of it that a private system might be set by. You can also get much more specific as to the patient.
Okay, thank you. See any other BAC members? So just quickly on this question for myself. I would, I think it makes sense to stay within the 300 foot notification if it's a tree on private property. And then if it's a if the tree in question is on city property such as parklands, that notification should be made on website, connect with Pacifica, et cetera. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you, Chair Moses. Myster, maybe you can share with us the next set of questions.
Thank you. The next area we considered was tree protection plan requirements. And DRG's recommendation is to adopt an industry standard for preparation of tree protection plans as an example, NCA 300 part five construction. Our question to you is, should the city adopt an industry standard for preparation of tree protection plans?
Thank you, Ms. Dear. Let me see what my fellow planning commissioners have to say about this. Commissioner Berman.
I vote yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hauser.
I had a question that I didn't really understand during the report, I think. So yes, I think that the city should adopt an industry standard for preparation of tree protection plans. I I wasn't quite clear on the difference between the canopy and what was being recommended. Did I understand correctly? It was like one and a half times trunk diameter?
So currently, the protection area is defined by the drip line, which is not defined in the ordinance. It is generally considered to be the area underneath the canopy. The NCA 300 part five defines this area as the diameter of the trunk of the tree multiplied by one and a half feet. And that would define the radius of the tree protection area, which would you would use to then calculate the area of the tree protection zone.
Maybe it's my math, but is that less restrictive than using the drip line or the canopy?
I restrictive and
is that a smaller?
It would be a large, it would be a larger area of protection.
It's a larger TPZ. Okay, then I would, then I'm for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Yes, I I'm in favor of item eight as well. And seeing no further comments, I'll turn the matter over to Chair Abbott.
For hands, appreciated that additional clarification. I'm in support of using the this new industry standard. And Commissioner Benton Shoemaker.
I agree. It's really great to understand that the definition of the tree protection zone standard is indeed in the ANSI standard. So I strongly support this, too.
Yes, I support it as well. Thank you.
Any other hands? Chair Moses.
Thank you. Looking, okay. I don't see any BAC input. So for myself, yes, absolutely should stick with industry standard. Thank you. Oh, hold on, sorry. May I mean, but Gossage, go ahead.
All right. One question that was flagged. Would this be in the preparation for of tree production plans during construction? So this would talk about impacts to preserve trees. Is that correct?
Yes.
I think adding a clarification that seems to be missing from a lot of true construction protection plan requirements is a clearer definition of what type of protection and intrusion can happen within a critical root zone. And even adding the definitions of half critical or quarter critical, I've seen in other jurisdictions allowing, for instance, no intrusion within the quarter critical, limiting it to four inches of development and change in grade within the half critical. And then allowing maybe some based upon plannings recommend, you know, review of the plan set within the critical root zone. Because items like sidewalks, utility trenching and other things happen within these zones and just giving some clarity on how much of these trees can be impacted as opposed to just leaving it to be subjective to the reviewer.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. We're clear.
Thank you, Chair Moses. Myster, I think we're ready for our next question or questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. We then discuss fees and penalties. Our recommendations are to review ways to de-incentivize tree removals and remove and review establishment of a tree fund. Our questions for you are, should staff study ways to de-incentivize illegal tree removals and should staff review establishment of a tree fund?
Thank you, Ms. Dear. Let's go ahead and hear from the planning commissioners then. Mr. Leo.
So, yes, I think staff should study ways to de-incentivize legal tree removals. I guess my comment on that is is there's, there's a couple of parties here. One, one is the general public who are want their trees removed potentially. And then you'd also have the tree companies to larger trees require these tree companies. If possible, perhaps wait, perhaps put more onus on the tree companies to actually not remove trees without a permit and have a higher cost for them. They can probably absorb that more as opposed to the member of the public who I'm sure there's many people who live in Pacifica who are unaware of that we have a tree ordinance. So I think there should be probably a way to disincentivize the public as well to to do their due diligence, but also have a very high level and responsibility for the tree companies as well. The second question, tree fund, yes, I think that's a good idea. Funds that could be generated from either the permitting process, anything that perhaps that that's just going to go to staff time to process the permit. So there might be an extra fees to go into a fund. But if there are fines that come into the city, they can potentially go into a tree fund that could then go to maintaining city owned trees or or projects to plant more trees around town.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Berman.
My answer to question nine is yes, and I really liked Commissioner Leo's idea. I think that's a great idea. I also want to add during the development of this ordinance that perhaps there's an equation that staff does just to keep track of how much it costs to permit the removal of a tree. So hiring an arborist, the associated permit fee for the tree removal with also consideration that that individual is paying building fees, probably two. And then replacement costs for for new trees or in lieu fees if if they're removing a heritage tree and if we decide to go that way. Looking at the cost of that compared to what the penalty to illegally remove a tree is is important. Looking at the cost of that compared to what the penalty to illegally remove a tree is, is important. Because if the, if they don't, if there isn't incentive to go through the necessary process to remove a tree, then some individuals will illegally remove a tree.
Thank you, Commissioner. I actually had a quick question, maybe perhaps even for the city attorney. And with respect to question nine and whether or not staff should study ways to de-incentivize illegal tree removals. I understood from the staff report that the $1,000 fee that's, or fine, I guess, that's baked into our ordinance is currently the maximum that's allowed under law. And I was curious, is that state law? And is there any sort of possibility, I guess, of addressing, if even our legislative delegation about tweaks there so that we could maybe adjust that number?
Yes, so state law, government code 36901 and penal code 19, together provide that $1,000 is the highest maximum misdemeanor penalty under the law.
And that's where fines are cross the board. That isn't specific to trees. That's just, you know, just generally in this area. So there probably wouldn't be much we could do around all that. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I definitely believe that staff should study ways to de-incentivize the illegal tree removals and that establishment of a tree fund is a good idea. So I'll turn it over then to Chair Abbott.
We, I'm looking for hands from PBNR Commissioners. And I see Commissioner Lusson.
Yes, thank you. First off, I would agree with Commissioner Liel about a harsher penalty for tree companies. I would look to extend that as well to contractors or other professionals that remove trees illegally. I also agree with Commissioner Berman that we need to make sure the math makes sense to incentivize people following the rules, or else they'll do the calculation. It's just cheaper to break the rules. With the limitation on the penalty being $1,000, I would put out the question, are there other penalties that we can consider? Perhaps the revocation of a, of a building permit if you're found to illegally be removing trees in order to, you know, build your ADU or do some other thing. So maybe there are other things beyond the monetary fine that we can look at. Thank you.
Commissioner Benton Shoemaker.
I think this is a very important section. You know, unfortunately, the city has not been enforcing violations of the current heritage tree ordinance for years. And this has encouraged the illegal removal of trees, which has resulted in flooding and other very dangerous situations. So I think it is very important to have strong consequences. And if it's only $1,000, I like some of the other suggestions about possible other penalties. But I also really agree that tree service companies should have consequences. And in other communities, tree service companies must get permits to operate in the city. Then they sign an agreement that they will abide by ordinances. And if they don't, then they can lose their permit, their business permit to operate. This is in Sacramento and Pacific Grove. So when they go to a home, they be sure, they'll be sure to ask for the permit or they won't cut the tree down because they don't want to lose their license. I know people who have been told this by tree companies. So I think that that might be a good way to go as well.
And I concur with a number of the commissioners with regard to penalties and different procedures for tree companies and contractors. And I think that it's also important to have part of that be a really strong public information campaign, easy to find information and help folks to be really aware of what they need to do. And question number 10, absolutely. Commissioner Benton Shoemaker, you had a follow-up?
I do. I also wanted to say that retroactive permits for trees don't make any sense at all. Once a tree is cut down, that's it. So there, that bit of code in the administrative code that allows for retroactive permits needs to be adjusted. And then I also wanted to, of course, say that I strongly support the establishment of a tree fund. This will help the city in maintaining city trees and replacing trees.
Thanks, sorry, just making notes. So BAC committee member Ryan Hoffman. Go ahead.
Thanks, Linda. Yeah, so I, I agree with everything that everyone said. I also just wanted to throw out there that I hope the staff will also study ways to incentivize legal tree removal. And so just making sure that there's also a frame of like incentivizing the behaviors that we want instead of just punishing the behaviors that we don't. And I very much support the establishment of the tree fund and potentially maybe using that some money for those types of incentive programs, sort of what it looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. BAC committee member Jonas.
I like the idea of establishing the fund to help the city with the taking care of or replacing or whatever the trees. I also like what Gail Benton Shoemaker said about making these people come into the city and sign an agreement before they can do any work. So they've got their hands tied as far as making some kind of a move that the city doesn't want them to make. I like that a lot, Gail. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee member Gossage.
I would agree with Commissioner Berman and many of the others. You spoke about the penalty needs to be high enough. Since there's a limitation on that penalty and a monetary amount, another way to incentivize or to break up the code between commercial projects and residential projects. And to incentivize or encourage homeowners to go through the process instead of just removing a tree from their backyard, would be to perhaps lower some of those costs for those types of projects that have a certain threshold of improvement costs. So that maybe they're excluded from having to pay the permit fee and/or the, the arborist report might, might be able to if it's not needed, just to encourage them to not add those added costs on small projects and for homeowners.
Thank you. And then I agree with Commissioner Abbott about having a widespread notification by the city advising of the process of removing and consequences of illegal tree removal. And then in terms of funding or penalize, adding in the personnel costs for any city staff that have to go out and investigate the illegal tree removal. And then, yes, I agree with establishing the tree fund number 10. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Moses. Mr. Maybe you can have the next question.
We also discussed mitigation measures. Our recommendations are to require a two-to-one replacement for otherwise healthy trees, review ways to ensure replacement trees remain healthy, and review establishing in-loof fees for trees not replaced on site. Our questions to you are, should Pacifica require a two-to-one replacement for the removal of an otherwise healthy heritage-protected or city tree? Should staff review establishing a process for main maintenance of replacement trees? And should staff review establishing in-loof fees for trees not replaced on site?
Thank you. We'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Hauser.
Um, thank you. I'm, I feel pretty strongly that for a heritage tree, and if we're separating it from a protected tree, that a heritage tree should be removed at at least a three-to-one ratio. There's a precedent for this. Planning Commission and City Council have both required projects for moving heritage trees currently to do that. I also think that for a protected tree, and here's where you get into like the discrepancy. I think for a protected tree, two-to-one is appropriate. I also think that we can't just say you replace trees. I think we need to set a limit of like a 24-inch box tree as the baseline and for larger trees, a 36-inch box tree. That's for question 11. For 12, I'm not sure I understand the question. Should staff review establishing a process? I think shop staff should establish a process. And then should staff review establishing in-loof fees for trees not replaced on site? I think it needs to be strongly, strongly discouraged that trees be replaced on site. I appreciate that we do need to have a tree fund. I know we talked a lot about that in the last question. But I think if you're removing trees from a certain site, it needs to be prioritized that that same site receive the replacement trees.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Commissioner Berman.
Thank you. For question 11, I think this is going to be a question that evolves. The answer to it evolves and it relates to other aspects that we've talked about today. So I'd be interested to see maybe other, other options or additional options in addition to the two-to-one ratio. I, I agree with Commissioner Hauser that a healthy heritage tree should be treated differently with the, the replacement ra, ratio than a protected tree. But I, I do know that there are certain cases where it's near impossible to replace a large tree on a small property. So I think there's certainly hardships that many of our single-family homeowners will be presented with, especially homes that are on steep grade. It's, it's pretty tough to find a healthy, a safe place for a large tree on a steep grade. So I, I'd be supportive of kind of alternative options, which kind of leads to item number 13. So yes, I, I think there should be an in-loof fee established. This also kind of goes hand in hand with looking at the cost or the de-incentivizing of illegal removal of trees. So everything kind of goes hand in hand and making sure that people choose to go through the legal process and follow the ordinance. And then for maintenance, for item number 12, I think this is also a larger discussion. And I'm not an expert on trees, but I think a maintenance period may vary depending on the tree. And it may not be one year, it may be two years. So I'd like to learn more about item number two. But yes, I think there should be a maintenance period for newly replaced trees.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dublin. Commissioner Dublin, you're muted.
I would like to add on question 11 that we create a list of acceptable native species that when we request that a tree be replaced, it's from, from a limited list of, of species and promote trees we want, want in the city. On question 12, I think tree maintenance is something that goes on for many years. And I think the staff does need to review and understand what's an appropriate maintenance process, even trees that are over 100 years old, they need maintenance. And finally, some sort of compensation for trees that can't be replaced on site sounds reasonable to me.
Thank you, Commissioner Dublin. Commissioner Liam.
I agree with the, the comments on, on question 11. But I, I will say with question 11, if we do acquire even a one-to-one replacement, we, we have to have an in-loof fee substitute for some. And I agree with some of the comments that Commissioner Berman made, where private property, they may not want a tree. They may not want to add an additional tree if they remove one to their existing property. And also in, in certain areas of the city, it may not be appropriate. So more commercial zones, if it's a commercial property, it may not be appropriate to actually have a tree there where the city could leverage in-loof fees to plant trees somewhere else in the area that's more of a public space, that more members of the public can benefit from it. So yeah, I agree with having a greater requirement for heritage trees. But with that, I think we have to have the in-loof fees so that folks can have the option to, to provide mine to the city. So the city can, can choose appropriate places for their replacement trees. And I think the added benefit of that is that we're incentivizing people to follow the rules and follow through the process. Instead of, if they get a permit, then they have to replace it on site if they don't want a tree. But also the maintenance aspect. And so with question 12 is, is if the city can replace the trees through the, in-loof fees, the city then maintains them and chooses the appropriate fees for, or trees for the location. I think 12 is going to be hard for private maintenance, just enforcement as well as follow-up, depending on how many trees we have. And I know, I understand staffing resources. So there should be one. But I would like perhaps to explore a self-reporting mechanism where the, the, the folks who got the permit data and report annually or wherever the cadence is to the city that the trees are healthy as opposed to having someone from the city going out and checking every single tree perhaps. So that's just a thought on, on 12. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, I, yeah, Commissioner's talking before me about, you know, covering this up very comprehensively. I, I do believe that there could be some situations where a two-for-one replacement or a higher level, if you decided a higher level would work, that might not work on a particular site along to the specifics of its size, elevations, slope, whatever. And I do like the idea of the establishment of a, of an in-loof fee process. And that, I, I think my only comments on that would be that, you know, the closer the tree could be planted to the place where the tree is removed, the better, that would be some sort of bias built into it. So we're looking to mitigate in the particular neighborhoods that were impacted in the first place by the tree removals. And certainly, again, a, a process for maintenance of replacement trees. I don't know if this might be by way of maybe some form of a bond or some form of a deposit would be released after a certain period of time when the trees have actually looked to have taken in some way. And perhaps that would be a thought. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to Chair.
So I'm looking for PBNR Commissioner hands. I see Commissioner Benton Shoemaker.
Um, I actually support the method that they're using in South San Francisco. They have a three-to-one replacement ratio, but the city arborist has discretion. So if three trees are too many, it can be less. And they have a plant-back deposit. So when someone comes to get a permit, they put down a deposit. And when they have planted the replacement trees, they get that deposit back. In South San Francisco, it happens to be 350. In other cities, it's 425. I think that that's greater incentive. And that kind of system doesn't prevent staff from reviewing maintenance and making sure that those trees live. People, some people were concerned they might just plant trees and die, let them die. So maybe returning the deposit after the trees are, are well-established. In South San Francisco, they plant 15-gallon trees because they feel they're more adaptable and that they have greater longevity than the larger trees. So I would support a three-to-one ratio. I would support making sure that those trees do survive. And I think that's what question 12 means, maintenance. And I also would support in-loof fees when it's just not possible to plant trees on site. Though the idea of planting trees elsewhere in the city is also a good one. Thanks.
Commissioner Lusson.
On number 11, I would like there to be some level of discretion. I, I liked the ideas that perhaps it's a little different between a heritage or protected tree, but also some discretion between if I'm replacing with two large trees versus three smaller trees. You know, so some consideration around there and not just hard formula. I liked Commissioner Ben Shoemaker's idea around a deposit. And maybe that helps address number 12. That'd be great to flesh that out. And for 13, I think there needs to be an avenue for some type of in-loof fees. I think it should be a high bar and discouraged. But there's certainly situations where the replacement of the tree is just not practical with the project. So, you know, make that a healthy, strong in-loof fee and discourage it. But give it as an open avenue or else you're just going to get violations and non-compliance. Thank you.
Commissioner Tella.
I do like number 11 with having some discretion, maybe.
I do like, uh, number 11 with having some discretion or maybe having like a range, uh, you know, from two to one to three to one, uh, with, uh, you know, having that discretion. Also, maybe I, I almost think like there should also be some exceptions for, uh, for not replacing. For example, you know, there might be some city needs with, uh, building ADUs or something and, you know, that's filling a need that's, you know, almost as important or if more important than the trees. So I think there should be some kind of exceptions and to identify what those exceptions would be.
Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Um, I think for a heritage tree, it should be a three-to-one ratio. I think it should be a minimum of a 15 gallon tree. And I think that it's important that they be planted back in the same neighborhood. Um, planting a tree in Frontierland to replace a tree cut down in Shark Park um, isn't really meeting the need of anything our entire community. And, um, I like the idea of that plant back deposit. I think that that's a really good idea and incentive, and that also means that folks would, um, maintain it. We've heard on several instances in the PB and R Commission that folks do plant a tree and they do indeed let that tree, um, die after it's there and it's been seen and it's been planted. So the goal is to maintain a healthy urban forest. And, um, if something cannot be planted back in, in, in an immediate neighborhood, then I think that we, and that, or that that could be handled indeed with the in lieu fees, um, following the guide for plant appraisals as far as the value of that tree replacement. Um, Commissioner Lee Song, your hand is still up. Is that just, uh, I think that's just a mistake. So we'll pass it to, um, Chair Moses.
Uh, thank you. Uh, BAC Committee Member Wells, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say that, uh, I'm not in favor of the two-to-one replacement, uh, if there's a removal of, uh, a tree for whatever heritage or protected tree. If there is a reasonable reason why that tree needs to be removed. Unless, of course, it's, uh, at a point where you say, well, uh, two trees can be planted someplace else in the city to offset the one that you need to replace now, but I think it's unreasonable to have a requirement of a two-for-one. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, BAC Member Gossage.
So having worked in a jurisdiction where the requirement was an inch-for-inch replacement for heritage trees, that's diameter, breast height, inch-for-inch. Um, and a percentage for trees that were protected. I find that three-to-one or two-to-one, especially when given at a 15-gallon requirement, to be a minor requirement and very low bar to hit, um, and an easy mark, um, for replacement for, especially for commercial projects. Um, as far as cost, um, I would highly encourage a consideration of um, finding a difference between the heritage and the protected trees and the replacement values, whether you go with the tree uh, ratio replacement or otherwise. Um, I would also say that, um, a recommended tree list is a good idea, especially with the focus or on native tree species. And I would also encourage that you write in a statute of limitation on the mitigation trees. I can, there's an easy loophole to clearcut a site by removing trees, planting mitigation trees. They fall under the threshold in a year's time. You redevelop the site, you have no further replacement requirements. So doesn't seem fair. So a tree that's been used for mitigation should hold its value uh, as a, um, can carry that same value since it's representing an older tree that was removed recently. So you should apply some kind of, um, timeline to how long that tree needs to stay, um, in its spot before it can be removed again and, and, um, or be valued because it's going to take a long time for it to hit your, um, removal protected status to get that large.
Thank you. BAC Committee Member Hoffman.
Yeah, thank you. This is maybe more of a questions. Um, so I'll defer to kind of wiser tree people on 11 and 12, but the question for 13 is for the in lieu fees for trees, is there currently a process that we have or if we were to have a tree fund and this money to that kind of identifies areas that are appropriate, the trees that should be planted? And would that be a relatively kind of quick pass-through of funds? Or would that also need to be something that would be set up, um, with the kind of funds that we're accumulating? I'm not sure who that question is to, but that's just a question.
I would defer the questions to city staff.
We would have to look at the, the fund and see, um, you know, we would have to analyze what, um, how the, the, that money would be, um, allocated.
Got it. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Um, yeah, uh, number 11, I agree with, uh, previous comments. Uh, if you're replacing, um, a tree, it should stay within that neighborhood. And then number 12 and 13, yes and yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Moses. Um, Ms. Dear, maybe the next question, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. We then discuss the title of chapter 14. Our recommendation is to update the title of chapter 14 from Maintenance and Preservation of City Trees to Tree Ordinance. Our question for you is, should chapter 14 title be changed to Tree Ordinance?
Thank you. I'll, I'll go ahead and turn to planning commissioners and ask anybody who wants to comment on this. I will say that I'm okay with the, uh, name change. Um, not seeing any other hands. I'll go ahead and, uh, turn the matter over to Chair Abbott.
Is there any hands from PB and R Commissioners? I'm not seeing any right now. Um, I'd like to note that I'm a little concerned we're changing names to Preset Preservation and Tree Ordinance. And I don't think they're very illustrious to the public. If the goal is to provide public education and ease of understanding and finding information, those are very broad. And it was my understanding that chapter 14 is more focused on city trees. I um, may not have this right, so I'm, I'm just looking for a bit more information for people to read these and to know what they're looking for. Um, Commissioner Benton Shoemaker.
I actually feel the same way that these are not descriptive enough. Um, perhaps, perhaps tree protection is, is clear that that has to do with protecting heritage and protected trees. And again, I think they should be all one thing. Um, but in the second one, that was really about creating a plan for our urban forest and for maintenance and care and really knowledge about what is in our urban forest, particularly city trees. And so if that's what chapter 14 is about, that doesn't really describe it. Just what I think in here.
Seeing any other hands from the PB and R Commission, so Chair Moses.
Uh, thank you. Um, let's see, I don't see any hands for BAC. Um, I agree with Commissioner Abbott that, uh, perhaps just need to work on tree ordinance could, is pretty wide umbrella that perhaps keeping with something maintenance and preservation of heritage trees, um, would be my thought. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Moses. Uh, Ms. Dear, next questions, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. We then discuss responsibilities for the director, the city, and adjacent property owners for city trees. Our recommendations are to define the responsibilities of the director, the city, and the adjacent property owner. Our question for you is, should the responsibility for the care of city trees be more clearly defined?
Thank you. We'll go ahead and, uh, hear from planning commissioners. Mr. Berman.
Yes, I think it should be more clearly defined, but when staff and, um, DRG are preparing this definition, I think consideration for what adjacent property owner costs may be and the feasibility of what they could actually do need to be considered. Um, for example, a lot of the homes in Pacifica don't currently have irrigation. So expecting a property owner to water a street tree, likely it just wouldn't get done. Um, or it's an unreasonable expectation. So that, that's kind of an example.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Yeah, I, I tend to share that view. I, I mean, I think that, you know, there in terms of when we, when we're talking about the city trees, whether we're talking about trees that are actually located on city property versus, you know, trees that are located, I guess, in the right of way, which I guess the right of way in some sense is a form of city property, but, um, just some clarity around that and, uh, I, I think would be helpful. Uh, Chair Abbott, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
I'm for hands. And in the meantime, I will say again, clarity good. That's been a theme for everyone all along that, um, providing good information that's clear and easy to understand is really important. And I think that we should make sure that that's an educational campaign to, um, that gets out there. It goes to realtors, it goes to neighborhood associations. And, um, and it could include the list of trees that the Public Works Department does maintain on what's right for our, um, Pacifica areas. Um, Commissioner Benton Shoemaker.
Um, I, I'm concerned about this question because I don't really know what it means. I think it's very important that, um, this, this current city trees remain city trees and that's four feet from, um, the outside of this, of the sidewalk. Um, I do think it is possible for homeowners to sign watering agreements. The Friends of the Urban Forest does this in San Francisco. They have agreements and there are green bags that are filled, say, twice a month. And so thinking a little bit outside of the box is a possibility here, but we want to be sure that we know which are city trees, which are private trees. And one other comment regarding San Francisco, um, they learned something recently. I learned this at a Davies Resource Group webinar that sidewalks do not need to be replaced. They can just be grinding down and they're doing this all over San Francisco. So that changes the cost dramatically for both the city and for the homeowner.
I'm not seeing other hands from the PB and R Commission.
All right. I don't see any hands, uh, for BAC. Uh, BAC Member Hoffman, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think I, clarity is great. I think what I don't understand is what the next step would be. So would there be, uh, uh, an endeavor to provide clarity and then it would be proposed back to, to this group or, or some other process?
So I currently responsibilities are implemented through policy and these are just not clearly defined in the current ordinance. So we're not suggesting changing any uh, current responsibilities, just simply defining what those responsibilities are in terms of the care for city trees.
So just reiterating what's in the policy already more clearly. Got it. Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Then I support this. Yes.
Thank you. Um, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Abbott that the, um, concept of realtors who are selling Pacifica properties should provide a list of, uh, responsibilities to new homeowners who have heritage trees on their property. So they're well aware from the get-go. And along with, um, residents who already have these sorts of trees that the city provides a clear-cut list of responsibilities. Um, you know, the city versus what the property owner is going to be responsible for. I think that's really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, Ms. Dear, uh, next questions, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairperson. Next, we review tree planting in the public rights of way. Our recommendation is that residents apply for a permit before planting trees in the public rights of way. Our question for you is, should the city require residents obtain a permit to plant a tree in the public rights of way?
Thank you. Uh, we'll go to, uh, Commissioner Hauser.
Uh, yes, I think this would be consistent with what most jurisdictions require and you shouldn't plant things that are not on your property. So yes.
I completely agree, uh, with respect to question 16. Um, not seeing any more hands. I will turn it over to Chair Abbott.
Those hands go up for, um, the PB and R Commission. I'll say absolutely. Um, Commissioner Benton Shoemaker?
Yes.
No other comments here. So Chair Moses.
Uh, no, I don't see any comments from BAC members, but yes, absolutely, their permit should be required. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, Ms. Dear, I believe you've got one more question, please.
Yes, I do. Last, we discussed the logging ordinance. Our recommendation is to consider reviewing and reducing redundant code. Our final question for you is, should staff review reducing redundant code?
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Hauser.
So I think that staff should, uh, reduce redundant code. Um, someone should not be required to get two permits to remove a tree. Um, that being said, if two departments need to review a, a removal of a tree, the permit should be routed to both departments. So for example, Planning and um, Parks Department or Planning and Public Works should like both need to review the permit, then that should be set up for in the permitting process.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Uh, Commissioner Berman.
My answer to this one is yes. Um, but I think, well, what I am guessing, the, the logging ordinance, one aspect of it is to require a permit or some critical review process for a project that removes a lot of trees. So I, I still think that there should be a critical review process for any project that removes a significant amount of trees. I don't, it might've been 20 or something. I, I mean, I think you could even classify a lesser number. But I'm not sure if, if those projects would then come through Planning Commission or City Council. Not really sure what the process is, but I do think if there's a development that's removing a lot of trees, um, there should be s- some additional process, I guess, the appeal process would, would be in fact that. Um, but even if the trees are, are not heritage trees, I still think if, if someone's removing a large amount of trees, there should be some additional process for review in addition to just kind of over the counter staff review.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. I don't see other hands. I'll go ahead and, um, turn the matter over to Chair Abbott.
Commissioner Benton Shoemaker.
I think the log, logging operation aspect is totally different from the heritage tree because of the size of trees. Right now, we're talking about the heritage tree ordinance where it's around 15, 16 inches close to the ground and logging operations are trees that are six inches or more. Very, very different. And 20 trees. Um, so I think it's very important to have either something in this ordinance or in a separate ordinance that covers the removal of lots of trees and maybe less than, than 20 trees, but trees of a much smaller size. So this question I think is misleading. It's not really, um, reducing redundant code. It's eliminating something, um, that is very different.
Commissioner Lee Song.
Thank you. Um, I think there might be aspects of, uh, that logging code that are redundant, so it should be reviewed. But I would caution that all of that is not redundant. So as others have pointed out, the it does have a definition of the max count of trees. Also, the definition of a tree is in there as well, and both of those components are not reflected elsewhere in the other code. There's also a concern that I think was just mentioned, I want to echo as well, that if you remove nineteen trees per year, how does this prevent the gradual whittling away of one of the forests that we have or large growths that we have? So I think there needs to be some consideration of that because I can see that being a loophole or workaround in the current policy. Thank you.
And I would agree. I'm not understanding the question or what was the triggering review of what was seen in the codes that this this question is out there. I think the logging operation is very different from the other conversations that we've had as both Commissioner Lusson and Benton Shoemaker just noted. And I went back and found when this was first written and it was in response to what the community felt was a clear cutting of trees back in nineteen ninety-six at the current Pacific Bay school and the adjoining San Mateo County Parkland. And huge concern about how cutting massive numbers of trees completely changed the character of that area. So reducing redundant code sounds great, but again, I don't want to see anything diminished or lose any clarity for the public about what protocols and policies and procedures they're supposed to be following. Thank you. Nothing else from the PBR Commission. Chair Moses.
Thank you. I do not see any hands up for BAC. I will just say that, yes, I actually agree with Commissioner Abbott that this is sort of an odd question, talking about ordinance and then just redundant code. Redundant code perhaps is one thing that should the tree ordinance should be clarified and not have a lot of miscommunications. But when you're talking about logging and taking out numerous trees, that's a whole other situation that needs to be addressed separately. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Moses. Well, I think we've made it through the seventeen questions that we've been asked to sort of go through together. And we've then come to the portion of the of the proceedings this evening where we're going to hear from the public. And again, I commend the members of the public who attended and stuck with us here and have had the benefit of hearing our thinking on it. So we'll go ahead then and turn to public comments and I'll ask for staff assistance in identifying folks who would like to comment and helping us with the time. We'll afford each commenter three minutes to to share their comments. And I said we've got some folks lining up. So, Mr. Batista, were you going to help to coordinate that or someone on city staff, otherwise we'll do it?
Yes, Project Coordinator, Tractor will be calling out the names and identifying each speaker.
Go ahead and identify the person.
Absolutely. Looks like our timer is up. We have four speakers. Speakers, I will call your name and or the last four digits of your phone number if you are calling in. When you're up to speak, please begin with your name before you state your comments. And it looks like our first speaker is Denise. Denise, you may unmute yourself.
Hello. My name is Denise Leonardi and I'm a long-term Pacifican resident. I would like to encourage the commission to leave the heritage tree title as is, for I believe it speaks directly about the value of the trees and the importance of the preservation for future generations. Also, I encourage the commission not to exclude non-native trees. Why? Because disease and weather warming are challenging the survival of California native trees. It's old ideology that native trees should be protected and have value. For example, the eucalyptus tree is often undervalued and easily removed. As of present time, it's at the present time, it's proven that eucalyptus are not inherently more dangerous than other trees. Sorry, I'm so nervous. It's it's myth then thought and it's a myth and thoughtful studies show eucalyptus are less prone to disease. And these trees provide a host of ecosystem services like so slope stabilization, windbreaks, wildlife habitat, pollution, reduction in carbon sequestration. Because of the evergreen forage, the eucalyptus removes pollutants all year long. Also, I want to speak before I run out of time, so I'm so nervous. I think that the commission should put an ordinance in to stop cutting the tops of trees off. And few other benchmark communities have incorporated in their tree ordinance. This practice is just cruel and kills the trees slowly and it causes more danger. Please be mindful that every tree that is mature will absorb more than forty-eight pounds of carbon dioxide carbon dioxide and release oxygen in exchange. I also want to speak to the methodology of measuring the trees, which I think currently is fine at fifty inches. And actually, the state is more generous with the size and coastal redwoods are protected at forty-five inches. Hardwood start at twenty-eight inches. So I think we should either keep it the same or make it smaller. And also, I think that people should be informed when trees are going to be removed because it affects all the communities, all the people in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leonardi. Ms. Tractor, next speaker, please.
Yes, our next speaker is Margaret Goodell, followed by Christine Bowles.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Margaret Goodell. I'm asking you to think about heritage trees from a different perspective. In Pacifica, only heritage trees get any protection and that protection means only that if removed, they must be replaced in some manner. If our definition of a heritage tree is to depend arbitrarily on the size of a trunk, a single trunk, we fail to consider many native trees that grow more slowly and have multiple stems or trunks. No one of these multiple trunks may ever reach the quote India industry standard of a fifty-inch circumference. But professional arborists can and often do aggregate their diameters to determine the size and calculate an equivalent circumference. Hedromelys are beautifulia or Toian, sometimes called California holly or Christmas berry, is an example. These are, in fact, among our most ancient trees, but currently have no protection and can be destroyed willy-nilly as nuisance trees. Logging currently is the only way to look at them. These old growth trees that are alive today may have been on our hills when Portal came over the mountain. They can live for three hundred years. They protect against erosion. They resist fire. They re-sprout after fire. Toians are one of the absolutely most significant and valuable plants for wildlife, for birds, for butterflies, for mammals. The indigenous people of Puristak also value them for both food and medicine here. Please look forward and really protect our environment. When we think historic, let's consider our natural heritage also. As you redraft the heritage tree ordinance, please add the Toians, which really truly are part of our heritage. It's easy. Fix the definition, please. Just fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodell. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Christine Bowles. Christine Bowles, you may unmute yourself.
Good evening. This is Christine Bowles. First, I want to say that I really appreciate the city's commitment to update our tree ordinances and for all of your work, all the people here tonight, to understand the related issues and to work together to write good policy. I'm so impressed with the format of this meeting and all the respectful comments. I've learned so much tonight. And I'll just make a quick plug for that it would be wonderful to have this process for our HPD ordinance to protect our hillsides as well. Trees are essential for our quality of life as well as for habitat, food and shelter for the many species for which we share this special portion of the earth here in Pacifica. The protection of large trees is essential in our fight against climate change. Arborist reports should be required. A recent report for one of my single-family residences in Palo Alto with thirteen trees cost the client only seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is obviously not a large burden, given the relative costs of construction. I review arborist reports and prepare tree protection plans in every other Bay Area city where I practice as an architect. I was really surprised to find that that was not required here. Preparation of these plans and enforcement during construction is essential to protect our trees. I agree with increasing penalties, replacement regulations, creating tree funds and requiring permits for new trees in the public right of way. I also agree with some of the comments from several commissioners and Margaret Goodell just now about considering the inclusion of certain old growth trees like Toians that may not meet the size definition for heritage trees. I think it's important to also review the EIR the city is currently preparing as part of the general plan update as well as the new county landslide maps. I've mission, I've mentioned several times in the last year in planning commission meetings that the general plan safety element says that planting trees on slopes greater than fifty percent creates more hazards and should be avoided. It would be helpful for our consultants to delve into the scientific research to understand if this recommendation applies to all trees or some fast growing trees with robust root structures might be acceptable. I also disagree with the deletion of the logging ordinance and can give you a specific recent example. A couple of weeks ago, the developer of the Vista Mar site started trimming the trees near the sidewalk. He carefully avoided trees that were heritage trees, but proceeded in chopping down many of Royal Willows, twenty-five feet into the site in a wetland area, identified in a biological report as the highest environmental resource and habitat. There were trees that were not heritage trees, but some that met the site requirements for logging. And these were butchered so badly that they will probably not survive. I'd also recommend adding some new language in the ordinance about not allowing the removal of trees for sites that are seeking development approvals until building permits are granted. For example, Harmony One Development was allowed to remove trees years before any permits were issued, causing unnecessary environmental degradation. Thank you.
And Ms. Bowles, please wrap up. Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Sandy Ayers. Sandy Ayers, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Okay.
I wanted to thank everybody for their efforts tonight and their consideration that the presentation was excellent and well done. And this has been very heartwarming and informative. And I'm very encouraged to see the support that the trees are getting. I personally think that as our city continues to grow, it's imperative that we continue to expand and maintain our existing urban forest. And that this needs to be overseen by competent and ethical leadership. I would love to see the city be able to afford to hire on a full-time certified arborist to lead this effort. At the very least, a paid consultant who can can look out for our urban forest. The tree fund is an absolute must. I know maintenance is a cost of maintenance and protecting the trees that we already have, as well as the ones that we hope to plant, is a huge hurdle. And I'd love to see the tree fund be be a vehicle for generating all that we need to do this. I'd love, I'd really encourage, as you guys are considering this, to maybe look at the San Mateo San Mateo's way of doing this because I hear a lot talking about tree replacement versus in lieu funds in lieu fees to go to a tree fund. And in fact, City San Mateo does both. So they actually assess the value of a tree, a certified arborist does, with giving it a point value based on health, species, size, location. Goes in, it's all factored in. The tree, it's a dollar value essentially given to it. You're giving credit back for replanting onsite as possible and whatever is left over then goes into the tree fund. And sometimes this amount of money can be substantial and 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 then they are able to turn around and use that to plant more trees and take care of the ones we have. So I would really encourage maybe a combined approach on that. The hiring of an arborist and and keep it, keep up the good efforts. Everyone on trying to establish an urban forest here couldn't be more important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Next speaker.
Our next speaker for the evening is Paul Toda. Paul Toda, you may now unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for all your work. My name is Paul Toda and I'm a member of Tree City Pacifica, a group that is now planning our third Arbor Day on November thirteenth, when we will celebrate the planting of our one-hundredth tree since we began. This year, we have also prepared for the Heritage Tree Ordinance Review Process by researching best practices in fifteen Bay Area cities, most of which have Tree City USA status, just as we do here in Pacifica. We condensed our findings to a two-page PDF that we sent to Commissioners, City Council, staffers in the Davie Resource Group. And we hope you find it helpful in your deliberations. You'll find on that sheet both the existing policies and our recommendations for change, recommendations that are typically middle of the road, given the range of requirements that you will find in other towns. Like you, we are committed to keeping Pacifica sustainable and verdant. Like you, we know the trees. That trees help increase property values, help businesses attract and retain customers, assist in the fight against climate change by storing carbon, make our hillsides more stable and prevent erosion, create an environment that attracts tourists, allows us to walk in beauty as we seek respite from our busy lives and provide habitat for wildlife, including species that are rare, threatened or endangered. That is why a strong heritage tree ordinance is so important. Besides the ordinance recommendation, we also hope that you will adopt a canopy goal for Pacifica. Most cities with Tree City USA status have canopy goals that guide their work in the urban forest. Pacifica's current canopy is around twenty percent. And we think an aspirational goal of thirty percent is reasonable. Tree City Pacifica requests that a canopy goal be added, not only to the ordinance, but also to the city's climate action plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Toda. Could we have the next speaker, please?
Yes, our last speaker of the evening is Susan Miller. Susan Miller, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you for taking my comments. And I want to thank everyone for your efforts in updating this policy. It has been a very enjoyable and educational meeting. As I said, my name is Susan Miller. I would like to speak about three specific areas of the heritage tree ordinance. First, I was pleased to see that in the study session report on page seven, that DRG recommends using industry-accepted methods to identify the area for tree protection zone. This method expands the area of protection. It can also be used to protect trees that may not be actually located on the construction site. The tree protection plan should clearly specify activities that are prohibited within the defined TPZ. Also, as in many other cities in California, I would like to see that all plans and building permits must be approved before trees can be removed. This prevents the removal of trees in circumstances in which the building permits are not approved and in cases where nothing is built and prevents trees from being removed years before anything is actually constructed. I'm also hoping that if a three-to-one replacement for removed trees is not feasible, then in lieu fees must be paid to the city. These in lieu fees include the value of each tree removed using the guide for plan appraisal, including labor costs for planting and maintenance. And also, a logging operation would require in lieu fees for each tree removed. These fees would be deposited in the city tree fund, which then could be used for maintenance and continued tree planting. Thank you for taking my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Tractor, I saw one more hand come up. I think we can go ahead and take that comment.
Yes, yes, thank you, Chair. Victor Carmichael is our next speaker. You are free to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Appreciate the opportunity to address this topic. I spent the afternoon reading the preservation of heritage tree, chapter twelve. These particular issues. And these particular issues came to mind. In Section 4-120.1, the Heritage Tree Ordinance Update needs to be needs to be specific, to specifically address COT sequestration as it contributes to the lessening and accumulation of greenhouse gases. I know another speaker already mentioned that, but I wanted to bring that up again because I think that's very important, that that's actually hardwired, specifically addressed in the verbiage of that ordinance. The other section, 412-04, and other sections, the vulnerability and sensitivity of the drip line to damage needs to be better defined. Root structures are hidden and are easy to inadvertently damage. And this may come up in the case of homeowners going ahead and making gardening changes in their own areas, own yards, and inadvertently damaging a heritage tree. Then, it's my understanding in Section 412-05, the application for heritage permits and 41207 tree protection plans, the monetary valuation seems to be entirely arbitrary for large, old, healthy trees, either made by the director or who approves a heritage removal permit or the contractor who provides the tree protection plan. This valuation, it wasn't clear how it's made or how it's arrived at. Anyway, those were the points that came to mind. I do appreciate all of your work on this. And it looks like you are, in fact, improving what we presently have. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Carmichael. That's all the public comment we have this evening on the site. And I really appreciate members of the public hanging in there with us and sharing their perspectives as well. So I think what we'll do then is go ahead and bring the matter back to the commissions and to the committee. And I believe this is the place on the proceedings where we'll see if any Commissioners or committee members have any brief concluding comments that they may want to make. I recognize that we had a chance to go through kind of point by point to address questions. But again, if anybody has any final thoughts or comments they want to offer at this point, this would be the time at which to do it. So I'll check with my colleagues on the Planning Commission first. I'll go then and turn the matter over to Chair Abbott.
You're on for Commissioner Benton's Shoemaker.
Yes, there were many things that weren't specific tonight, where they were general questions, but we didn't have specific plans for the revision. And I'm hoping that we will be able to give input later when, you know, like the diameter is defined and other things are defined. So I would like to ask for more information. I'd also like to support a couple of those speakers. I think the idea of a canopy goal is excellent. Most Tree City USAs have canopy goals, and 40% is a great idea. And also that no trees be cut down on any development before all building permits and plans have been approved. Thank you.
Commissioner Lusson.
Yeah, I'd like to echo some of the same points as well, that no tree removal prior to permits being complete for any construction or development. I like the idea of a canopy goal. I think that would be great to integrate that in and make that part of our vision going forward. And finally, there was some question that was brought up around eucalyptus. I'm not an expert on the topic, but it sounds like there might be some debate on this subject. And I would love for the consultants perhaps to, you know, in some future iteration of this, educate ourselves and the public around the topic of eucalyptus. So thank you very much.
Great. And I'd like to note that I really appreciate all of the information and work that went into this. And I hope that at the end, we're going to get an update on the next steps because this is just part one of a lengthy process. And through this, again, I'd like to say that I hope that we never lose sight of the purpose of the heritage tree ordinance. And I actually went back to an April 14, 1982, copy of the Pacifica Tribune, when this ordinance was approved by a four-to-one vote of the city council. And the comments were that the preservation of trees is important for the health, safety, and general welfare. And trees contribute to the cultural environment by becoming living landmarks of the city history. And there was acknowledgement that the ordinance recognized individual rights, but protects the trees where they are deemed a significant element of nature and the community. So I think it's very important that that original intention not be missed in any updates. I loved all the comments about clarifying things, making everything clearer and more understandable for the public, as well as Commissioners and committee members who may be needing to make decisions about the ordinance. That will be helpful to everyone. And I really think that I want to say thank you to the folks from Tree City Pacifica and the information that they pulled together, because I found that really helpful. And all of that information that's in here and some of the recommendations and best practices that they provided weren't all topics that came up tonight. But I think they're really important to review as part of coming up with our final updates to this, including that not removing trees until all permits are approved and those canopy goals. That's really important for our future here in this time of climate crisis. So if no other comments from the PBNR Commission, Chair Moses.
Thank you. Yeah, I just reiterate, appreciate all the work done by Public Works to organize this, along with everyone getting their commission and committee members together to provide input. And I would like to see where we go with the follow-up on this. I don't see any hands raised. So, all from BAC, thank you for the participation.
Here's the chair. We have one last slide.
Please, go ahead.
So we wanted to share this update with all of the Commissioners and committee members. This happens to be our next steps. So this is the completed and tentative schedule for this project. So as we told you in the report, stakeholder entries were completed in August of 2021. Now, we're at the joint study session, which we just hopefully completed tonight. We will be doing pop-up events and public engagement events hopefully in November of 2021. And then we should be releasing a benchmark study with all these comments and, you know, analysis by the end of December. Hoping to have a study session with council in early 2022. And then we would start drafting an updated ordinance, which incorporates all the comments that were made and analysis in February or March of 2022 with a discussion to city council regarding those changes in April 2022 with the hopefully adoption of the updated ordinance in May of 2022. So as you can see at the bottom of the slide, we do have a public website, which is www-publicinput.com/pacifica-tree/ordinance/update. Pacifica Tree Ordinance Update. And at that website, that is a way of communicating to stakeholders and interested people who would like to be involved with the update. So we encourage everybody to participate and get signed up so we can send out emails to let everybody know what kind of events are happening regarding the ordinance update. And, you know, just out of just closing statements, I was impressed with this, with everybody's comments. This was a great working study session. And big thank you to all the Commissioners, committee members for providing us with invaluable comments that we will analyze to help update our heritage tree ordinance. And this is a very important project for the city. And I thank you and thank everyone for the participation and hope that everyone participates in the future spaces. So that's my closing remark.
Well, thank you, Mr. Batista. I want to thank you particularly, and of course, all of city staff that worked so hard to put this together and the consultants who, you know, helped us to get to this point thus far. And really appreciative about my fellow Commissioners and committee members who, again, stuck with it here through the process and offered such extraordinarily good insight, and members of the public who did likewise. So I think with that said, I'm going to go ahead and declare us adjourned for the evening. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Great job.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, everybody. Thank you.